Well, yeah, I don't know.
They were, they, they, they were.
Oh, well. It's like long lines. That is.
Hurt down.
I think that's what there's not gonna be.
What, there was a church in there. That's what I was just thought. Water.
Find where everybody's. I think it was by the, by the, I think it was. Uh, well, so. Really, that, yes. It didn't say, I don't think we're going to share this. They want to. Can you get started? It's a little bit too much. Oh, yeah. We can see you do. Hey. You can keep that part of the thing.
Yeah.
You know, like, I'm. They're proceeding. Hi, how are you doing? If you're. Say, tomorrow I have my, I have my, that's actually what I'm forward. Certainly, you want to help. Keep on staring at you. Uh.
Or.
Um.
That's why it's all for. She'd be about the president to me. If the time should over.
Where are you? Rachel, what did I go by?
Contact with. Yeah, well, directive has been enforced since I was on council. I was, I'm told that twenty two. Like, so since then. But like, it's just been counted, the council direction, direction. It's not that your money didn't work, so. But I look to you that we're not one to do the job. But it's. Well, it started with that, we gave for a three hundred thousand. So. Got the family for a hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Like, you yourself.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And remember.
Let me see my. Yes, I know. I can. Yeah. Yeah. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call the proceeding to order. For personally.
Well, if you would, it's just about. The state's. Nation. It's. With the issue. Into this. We've never seen a.
Our board manager.
Council President Denise Clark Dickerson.
President.
Council Douglas Iger. Council Beth Ann Johnson.
President.
Council Michelle Miller.
Here.
Council Vice President Sean Baymore.
President.
Council Michelle Roberts.
Present.
Council Walter Stubbs.
Yeah.
And Amanda Hammond.
Present.
Have presentations. Mr. Paul Robinson.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
Thank you very much for inviting me here this evening. Jack asked me to come and just go over a quick presentation with regards to Pliggett. Uh, it's my understanding you weren't that knowledgeable of it. Many, many elected officials are not. Very often, I'm dealing with the, the, the finance committee or the finance directors. But again, thank you very much. I have a little handout that I left on all your desks. Uh, it looks longer than what it is, I promise you. Uh, but I will go into what Pliggett is. Number one, people call me Pliggett, Plig, Pigeon, Pliggett. You name it, I've been called it, it doesn't matter, I answer most anything. But the, the trust itself was literally founded in nineteen eighty one because there was not a good place for local governments to invest their funds. So with that in mind, literally two municipalities, and to be candid, it was two boroughs that actually started the Pliggett Trust back in nineteen eighty one. Think it's important that you recognize that we only follow Pennsylvania state code with regards to investment uh, and, and the, our, our own investment policies. We have been managed by PFM Asset Management, that is a division of US Bank since the inception of the trust. So actually, I'm an employee of PFM Asset Management, spending ninety nine percent of my time with, with the trust. The next page you'll flip over, if you can see, the trust is sponsored by all the major associations in the, in the Commonwealth. Uh, without a doubt, one of the most important ones are the boroughs. So it's down on bottom left-hand corner. Pliggett is made up of eleven board members, and that is referenced on the next page. And the way our board members are selected is that if and when there is an opening on the board, the board goes back to the association. And then the association will somebody at that point. And then after that, the members of the trust, of the board of directors of the trust, are then appointed on a yearly basis by the membership in which the borough, even though you're not active with the trust, you are actually have been a member at one point in time. As you can see here, the eastern part of the state is very well represented right now. We have a, uh, uh, well, one is not referenced here, we have the, the finance director for North Penn, which is up in Montgomery County. The C, CFO for Chester County is on our board. Uh, the manager for Upper Darby sits on our board of directors and so on. So the eastern part of the United States is, is very well represented. If you go to the next page, the reference, the significance of the trust. We are currently have over thirty two hundred members of the trust. And please keep in mind, there are only of municipalities, school districts, counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And depending on the time of year, uh, as this one references, this was June of last year, we manage over eleven billion dollars of just government funds. So it's obvious that we are uh, familiar with what we do. Next page is just really gives you all a little bit more detail as far as the breakdown of the membership. Uh, as you can see, uh, boroughs is right up there, we're only ten short. We can be ahead of the townships in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So that is something that, that we all need to be, to be working on. The next page goes into what we really are set up for. We are a nonprofit, so whatever we can, we return to our members with regards to higher yields on their investments. We have no fees and on our money market accounts. We have free checking through our Pliggett Class Fund. We have no reserve requirements in which many financial institutions will require a ten percent reserve. And though that ten percent reserve receives no interest, uh, it is permitted under, under a federal law. It is something that, that, that we do not have or do not use. We have no balance requirements. As referenced, we only invest in what is permitted under Act Ten of twenty sixteen, which is the current code for what local municipalities are permitted to invest in. Uh, are we are. What we try to do is provide the, the strongest yield that we can for our clients. Uh, and the other important factor is we're all the same. Doesn't matter if I come to the smallest borough in the Commonwealth, or if I'm standing in front of the city of Philadelphia, their yields, the rate sheet that is put out on a daily basis, which I also have on your desk, is for every single governmental entity in the Commonwealth. Very often, some other financial institutions, if you're a big boy, they'll offer you a good deal. If you're a little boy, they may not. We're all the same when it comes to Pliggett. So whatever you see on our rate sheet is what's provided to all our clients. Investing in Pliggett, without a doubt, the most important factor is safety. We recognize that we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. And we follow the code very, very closely. And we also want to make sure that we provide you the liquidity that you need so that when you do have bills to pay, funds that you need, that those funds are accessible. Yield is important, but it's not the most important thing. Compliance with regards to legal requirements. Uh, I kind of joke, if you knew the compliance that we're required to go through, because we are not a bank. We're under the SCC and FINRA, which in my personal opinion is significantly stricter than the Banking Commission uh, that most financial institutions work with. We also believe in diversification. As you will see on our rate sheet, we have three, what we call liquid funds, or funds that are available on a regular basis. And we also have two fixed term fixed rate investment options. One is CD program and one is the Pliggett Pro, the Pliggett Term Program. The next page will kind of get into the different funds we have. Uh, we have Pliggett Class. That is a fund, but it's also, as you heard, it's our checking account. So as of today, we can provide or could provide the borough with free checking and it is off and is currently at a four point one eight yield for interest. We have Pliggett Reserve, which is, I'm gonna say, a somewhat, somewhat savings account. Uh, it is also based on prior Act Ten uh, investment options. And that has a four point two nine as of today. And then we have our Pliggett Prime Fund. Pliggett Prime allows two withdrawals per month. Uh, is following the Act Ten Investments and is providing a four point five one percent return on your investments. And then I referenced Pliggett Term and CD Program. If you look on your rate sheet for the day, there they are referenced there. What I can say, if you take a look at our rate sheet, and it is very unusual historically, we're in what they call an inverted yield curve. And what that means is traditionally and historically, the longer you put money out, the higher return you get for that investment. It's the opposite right now. Because partly the market's not sure what's going to be going on in the foreseeable future. So literally, right now, the best yielding fund that Pliggett has is our somewhat li- liquid Pliggett Prime Fund at a four point five one. Not saying that the borough shouldn't consider fixed rate investments, because a year from now, we may not be looking at that kind of, of a return upon, on the investments. Uh, cash management services, we can do most everything we can, that a bank can do, other than literally, we don't have bricks and mortar down the street, and we can't accept coinage. Uh, we can, if we were to work with Borough, uh, what are the options would be to use one of our, uh, what we call an onsite electronic scanners, scanning your checks to go into the bank. We also have mobile deposit, the same way as what you have on your phone. We have that if the borough only had one or two checks a week or month that needed to go in, we provide you that, that app at, at no cost, you know, at all. Um, with regards to some of the other programs we have, we do have the Pliggett Procurement Card Program. It is the use of a credit card that is set up significantly different than what you and I are accustomed to, the, the credit card that we carry in our wallets. The borough is provided a global credit limit, and then you decide how that credit would be distributed if you wanted to use all that credit as provided to you. So an example would be, you may have your public works person with a credit card that has a hundred dollar credit balance. You may have the persons doing your accounts payable with a ten thousand dollar credit balance. The plus in this program is provides a cash rebate. So the more you spend, the more you get back. And without exaggerating, I have clients that are generating fifteen, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars per year just for using the card. Uh, and there is no charge at all for, for the card. Some of the other services that we will be glad to do for and with the borough is we can provide a cash flow analysis. You provide us your inflows and outflows over period of time, usually two years would be best. We then will do an analysis to figure out what kind of liquidity, I mean, how much liquid funds do you need? And how much, how much of your funds could you invest? And that investment may be sixty days, ninety days, three hundred days. But what we would do is to be able to assist you on how to maximize your earnings on the funds that you get in. We all know that the vast majority of our funds come in tax season, March, April, May. And you have that, you have to make sure those funds are there all the way into December. So you can look at options other than just placing all those funds in a checking account and having to sit there at a minimal amount. You can look at other fixed term investments or other investments that may provide the borough with a greater return on their uh, on, on their investments. The next page is just really group pictures of the gang of us to take care of you all throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We have a very strong regional support customer service group. Uh, I want to sit there and say, we are probably one of the best in the state, if not the best with regards to helping clients. We also have an online portal called Connect. It can, you can bring move funds in, move funds out, meaning you can have it come to Pliggett from your local bank or go or come from both of Pliggett to your local bank. Uh, you can move funds to different funds, meaning so if you have funds in your class, you can move it to reserve, et cetera. Getting a little bit too deep into weeds, but it is a, a very robust online system for your, for your users. And that is about it. So I would hope that there may be some questions for you all. I do always want to reiterate that we are not a bank. So the most important thing is we don't lend money out. Uh, but other than that, we can do pretty much that a bank do. Yes, you're on.
So impressive that it's fifty seven, I was seven thousand.
Yes.
Um, if you have authorities listed here. They earned free, I was over there trying to through your webpage to see what some of the, whether it's the authorities, the cities, just to get a general.
Is the. Uh, we, I mean, Central Delaware County is one of our clients, Delaware is one of our clients, which called that authorities. Uh, the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority is one of my clients now. Uh, I handle that eighteen counties on the eastern part of this, of the, of the state.
Big ones.
Well, all, well, I also have Spotsus Manhattan County up northern Pennsylvania, so. Uh, and I will sit there and say, out of the eighteen counties, I work with seventeen of the eighteen counties have funds with the trust in a varying, varying degree from, you know, a couple of, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. I also have counties like now that have well over three hundred million sitting in, in, in the trust. Uh, with regards to Delaware County, I'm gonna sit there and say, off the top of my head, eighty five percent of the municipalities in Delaware County are members. Uh, and probably eighty percent are active members in, in the trust. Uh, as I said, I mean, eleven billion dollars is larger than most regional banks, and we only accept one type of a customer, and that's a government. So we've been around for a long time. We recognize the importance of what, what and who we work with.
Right. Like I said, the, the counties along my, I, I know. Sixty seven, fifty seven.
And it's exciting. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a different group of people that I, you know, I deal with, but I think the most important thing, as you see, is that we, we do put forth our effort, we have our own trading room, you know, up in Harrisburg, that we have ten traders that just are dealing with the limited amount of investments that local governments are allowed to do. So it is also important that PFM, other than just managing Pliggett's pool, we manage nineteen other state pools in the United States. So PFM Asset Management, just with pools, manage about a hundred and thirty five billion in assets. So.
Might know.
We do, we do. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to have you, we're more than happy to answer them.
You might want. I don't have a page somewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I do have a question, I'm sorry. For things like you were talking about doing like the cash study and so on and so forth. Are there fees for that? Okay. So everything is, is basically fee free?
What we recognize is, as you saw, our board of directors are made up of people just like you, or just like Jack. It's either elected or appointed or first, considering a board. We recognize that you don't have the time to go playing charades and games. So all our, our rate sheet all reflects net rates. There is only two times ever that there will be any out of pocket costs to any of our participants. You use us for checking, you get your first round of checks for free.
Mm-hmm.
Your second round of checks, and thereafter, if it costs twenty five dollars to print the checks, the borough will be charged twenty five dollars. The trust makes no money off of the checks. We just charge you for what it costs. The borough would also get, or any of our members get two, or excuse me, four wire transfers per month for free. After that, they're five dollars and fifty cents. Most banks charge thirty dollars for a wire transfer. In this day and age, there's what they call ACH, some electronic transfer of funds that has no cost at all, and you can do as much as you want incoming and or outgoing uh, at, at, at no cost. They're the only two times there'd be ever a time that we'd be sending you a bill. Other than that, what you see is what you get.
And a- also with ACH, if we wanted to put bills online, we want to pay PICO bills or whatever.
That would go through your, well.
Through the bank and not through you guys.
You could probably do it through a procurement card if you can, but if you set up ACH, you can set, you could. I think it's a little bit cumbersome.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not geared for like what you're, I, what you and I are talking about doing at home. And sometimes some vendors, they don't ask me why, it's fine for your home to do it online, but they're not very receptive to a government and or a business doing it online. But that's saying it's not the case, and not saying it would not be something that we could look into for you. Uh, we could also do, you know, payroll for you. It's not, we wouldn't handle the taxes, but once the taxes are taken care of, the net paycheck can be direct deposited into your employees' accounts and has no cost at all.
And thank you.
All right. I left my business card. If you're like me, ten minutes from now, you're gonna go, oh, I should have asked this question. Give me a call, and for those that know, uh, or don't know, I'm a local, I live in media. So if you need me, I can be here in fifteen minutes. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. What Paul didn't tell you, he understands borough's intent, he's got at least three terms in the borough council, the councilman, two terms of the planning commission before that, he's one of the smartest finance guys I know, so. He has my vote of confidence. He, he's got municipal government blood.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Lynn, I'm the Principal Lynn Architects. Um, we're a firm of, uh, architects, civil engineers, and co-officials over in media, which is also where he lives. Um, I live in another province township, so I, they didn't let me immediately, it's too expensive anymore. And we have had the pleasure of, I have two more, I think we're good.
Thank you.
It's new faces up here. Um, we've had the pleasure of doing a lot of projects, about every year or two, you seem to wander to more borough and do something. And, uh, technically, last week it was at Forty Forty L Avenue, there's new apartments called the old medical office in the corner. Action tonight I have with me, um, he gets it, and it's all, it's my, everybody's smile. Uh, the pastor is here and he already has his church in Moreton Borough. We brought him in on Pennington Avenue about.
Four years back, five years back, or five?
Five years back, the old, I mean, the old, uh, social club, the Republican Club, yes. And he, uh, is a successful pastor. And he has a growing congregation, and frankly, out running the building. So I'm here to, I will not be up promising you more than six or seven minutes, and they pull justice. Uh, I'm here because I'm just curious about how we could possibly bring his church to Thirty Two South Worth. Now, Thirty Two South Worth is currently vacant. Um, I moved the, it's right next to the major parking lot, next to the seventh station. If you look at the first picture, the little illustration there, serial shot here, was a pretty good idea. And the building with the little red dot is the building. The parking lot meeting next to it, it's fourteen fifty two car parking lot, it's part of the property. And then the seventh parking lot is beyond that to the north. Um, and I bought the original, um, fitness studio, whatever we want to call it, back there in two thousand thirteen, and it been. Uh, and then about three or four years ago, we had one, not considered great use, unfortunately, a police club, a spirit strip, you wanted to go on film. So that fortunately wandered down the highway, it happened. It is vacant today. He has the opportunity to buy the building, uh, to move his congregation. And I call, um, particularly, I called Charles Cantillon, said, Charles, I'm looking at the zoning bill, it's in C commercial. And in N C, there aren't any churches, in fact, churches in Moreton Borough exist only on in residential zoning, district, special section. So there's, there's about the forty cabinet, so in your code and the N C section. Uh, and there, actually, I gave you a copy in the back. What says all other similar uses? What does that mean? I don't know. Charles, anytime someone discusses all other similar uses, his advice is to appear in front of borough council, have a discussion. Whether I end up going to the zoning hearing, or at least you know the project now. Or whether there's some way that the borough can work with the church and interpret all of it, that's sort of my question this evening. Um, if you take a quick peek at these pictures, the second shot is a shot um, with the face of the building on the left hand side, the right foot side. Not gonna get anybody in the cover of architecture, but I'm sure you. Um, looking out the street then, of course, you know, you have the, um, Rego's Pharmacy directly across the street. There's a little daycare, it looks like. Rego's or Rego's?
Rego's.
Yeah. Then we, then we go up the next section, we go up there to Mitchell Avenue. And we've got, uh, Lucas, and then American Del, and actually, I did the vault judicial, I converted the bank to the vault about four years ago, I guess now. Um, nice, nice, uh, young couple on that building, and Sabrina and Matt Kelly at the side, it's a nice place for it. Um, so that's one shot. The next couple of pictures show you the stellar building with the incredibly large construction size. We start with the front facade over on, uh, Morton, and then we work our way around to the side shot. And you can see the pharmacy across the street. Next picture is simply standing back in parking lot and looking across the parking lot from Taylor Avenue. Um, the next picture is a photograph of the rear of the building, got all these green facades. And then the next two pictures are the parking lot. Uh, one of those is looking, um, across, with my back to Thirty Two South Morton, across the parking lot with the seventh lot in the background. And then finally, the next picture is uh, a shot standing up against Taylor Avenue, looking back at the whole city. And the last picture is empty, this is the new facade they put on. And you know, that building is absolutely horrific when we got in there, speaking of it's more of a investment. Spend some time and money, it'll fix it up. Um, nice, nice gentleman, nice, nice congregation. I gave you in your packages as well. Um, uh, a little piece, and you get the pastor's name on the first page. I kept asking all these years, why do we go by Pastor Simeon? Because I, why can't I build any better in my place, my life? It's a true story. So he goes by Pastor Simeon. If you can use the whole name right there. Um, and the N C neighborhood commercial, I think, might be your next page in there. And that's why I get into the use of which, in your opinion, the borough council are the same general territory, you love use this, and not definitely things that are appropriate. We have one other discussion, it's part. Parking is not listed in all the board of current. Talking about a, uh, your parking ordinance forgiving, and I'm the zoning officer in a couple towns, your parking ordinance using a little bit tweaking on zoning, plus the less motion. So I don't know where a fitness center comes in. It's also not really a use of right in this district, so it's sort of there as a legal non-conformity. Um, one of my options would be, your, your ordinance allows me to go to the zoning hearing board and request a special exception for use if it's another non-informal use of a equal or lesser impacted. Uh, so that'd be one option I have. Of course, your ordinance requires one space for every seat in a church or sanctuary, which is like onerous, but it only requires one for every forward and then. So I haven't quite figured out the dichotomy. Um, I would suggest that the parking field, because this doesn't really discuss the existing, um, facility. I would say the closest thing that you have there under the existing practice that's in the building right now. Um, it's either a personal service shop and businesses, as close as I can get to it. Which is, by the way, also one of one hundred square feet. The building's ninety four hundred square feet, that'd require ninety four spaces. His church is gonna have about ninety to a hundred seats, so the seat count is partly neutral if I look at it that way. I'm just throwing all these out up for consideration. Um, because again, the community doesn't go there, uh, as far as use. I promise you, I'm down to about a minute, I'll be quiet. Um, I don't know whether I approach councilperson follow-up discussion. The zoning officer, Carlos's solicitor, it's on a hearing board solicitor, but I really wanted to get some dialogue flowing tonight. Um, I'd love to figure out how to make this happen for the pastor. What like this?
Nothing. Uh, I could say there was interest in the building, I've seen that to know. Um, and they were under, under the impression, impression that it would be council that is making these decisions. I would say definitely, uh, doing the diligence with the zoning uh, and having all that in place, because that is something that the gentleman, prior to you guys coming, did not have. Um, and then maybe come back before us again with everything. Um, and then maybe come back before us again with everything. And then we could be more supportive in that way. Um, there is a lot, like you said, with that building, so.
I could write you a little, if you will, like a little narrative, talking about use and talking about parking and I'm gonna use this word arrogantly, opportunities for the borough to let this happen, because I think this is an opportunity. All the things I've seen interested in that particular, uh, building, none of them exactly stellar. Um, I know this gentleman, I know his congregation, I met him, I've actually sat there for a service. So it's a really, really great group of people that just all smile all the time. A lot of them are healthcare workers. In fact, the, uh, I should have shared this with you, their typical, um, congregation worship is somewhere around uh, ninety, a hundred thirty people, including children, they put the children within the congregation, so the numbers are not that nearly numerous. Uh, they, the other advantage is they really only use this on Sundays and then Wednesday night and Friday night, they have a Bible and prayer service. So that parking lot suddenly becomes sort of available to the community other than those times you're using it. And parking is so starved in Morton. Um, that I think that's another opportunity that we haven't used, it isn't really used, it's seven days a week. You know, morning to night, it opens up that parking field, um, for other uses. I'll write all this off. But he is gonna have to move fairly quickly, so I will put together, with your permission, a narrative. Should I send it to council, to Carl, to zoning hearing board solicitor, to zoning officer?
Carl.
Okay. Carl knows zoning as well as anyone.
Yeah, I would say Carl to start.
I can go to a zoning hearing. I can charge a fee to go. Like, I was, I did the last zoning hearing. Don Patroza and I did it for him. Um, I, I'm always trying for, for a good organization not to spend their time and money if there's a way to interpret it without going outside the box. Favorably within what's written. I always like to try to do that, but if I can't, I'll go to the zoning hearing board. Um, and either as a special exception where I think I could convince the board that it is really a conversion from one to the other. As you know, and since board knows, under zoning law, under the M P C, there is nothing special about a special exception. It's basically, you don't even have to report it. This is compatible with the name of the Sebastian five.
I just have one more question. What is your plans for the building that you acquired and you did all of that work, like are you gonna sell that? Are you gonna rent it out? Like, what is your plan for that?
Yeah, we still, we haven't said that.
Okay, so you would wanna sell? Okay. Yeah, that's. I, I wouldn't see, I haven't been there yet, so I definitely wanna take a look inside.
And he said about fifty-five hundred square feet, my quick assessment was ninety-four hundred change, so this is really moving up in size.
Yeah.
Uh, to match the congregation a little better.
Anybody else have other questions?
Can I give you, can I give you all the information you need at least to hear about the proposal?
Yes, thank you very much.
So I will, should I address it to, to Jack or just to the core? I'll cut you. And I'll, I'll get that to you and, um, you get an opportunity to look at it between now and the next council meeting, that'd be appreciated. I don't know of anybody else currently kicking the tires to buy it, so the real estate agent is.
Yes.
Real estate agent is, yeah. Look at that. Um, uh, and, um, I just would like to move, if it's gonna happen, I'd like to move forward, cause if I have to go to a zoning hearing, I have to apply, I've gotta apply thirty days in advance, I've gotta wait for the hearing, uh, and then there's an appeal process, so that moves me several months down.
I, I don't know that you would, because some of the highlighted things that you said, especially about the, um, the re- retail stores and businesses serving the everyday needs of the community. Um, that A paragraph there and then going down to, I, just the parking needing the space for the parking alone. Um, I don't know that you would necessarily, necessarily need to do that, but, uh, I would just say maybe put something down, but they would need to do that, but other than that, I don't see that. Because he, he made the bank of the money.
I may be able to make a cogent argument that the parking is neutral and the system used to that matching. I haven't changed the parking shorts, well, the system to the new, because neither one's really listed as abuse.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I would treat it as one not confirming to another, you know, neutral parking scenario if I could. I'll at least write it up.
Yeah, I'd just.
You know, you know what this, this is all about. And again, I, I do an awful lot of zoning and I wear the hat as a zoning officer a couple of places, so I understand zoning fairly well, I think.
So that will be enough ample parking space?
Well, there is no church at all.
Because, because currently he does over, oversee his parking space and uses the streets.
Well, right now he has thirty-one, thirty-one spaces in the lot. This would get him up to fifty-two. Um, I'm not saying on any, I don't think there's a church in Morton Borough anywhere that has adequate parking, that goes Sunday usually. Cause it seems it's, it will, it will be on the street on a Sunday. Um, I go off to the, uh, shorter church off the street, there's no parking, great church, been there forever, you know, and, and I think churches sort of find the wrong way with parking. I've never seen an ordinance frankly with one space per seat though. It's like.
Yeah, but we just noticed with, since they moved into the neighborhood, it's been more, they're on one street, both sides, they're on every corner when they have things.
I'd rather, I'd rather have him have a parking overflow that are here in the street.
Correct. He does. And well, he also has to be considered of the neighbors, cause I mean, they were parking on in their entrance to their driveways, all these kinds of things were helped.
Well, the beauty here is, number one, we don't have a residential neighborhood, except that he marries down the, down the street. We don't have a real residential neighborhood. This is a Sunday in a commercial district, and the seventh lot's next door. I suspect the church in the corner are using the seventh lot. Um, and I really think that this lot, the church, if this is owned by anybody else, they're not gonna park there during the week. There's some opportunities that might have some parking to support the retail community.
Well, then we don't get parking, but it's pretty.
Yes, so.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it seems like it fill every meter.
Yeah, but people park there, so they don't have to.
Well, you'll have to help me work that out. All right, thanks. Appreciate the time, I really do, and I'll, I'll put something together next Sunday.
All right, thanks for that.
Thank you.
And you do during the weekend, people do use it.
Yes, so some of you become substantial.
We'll give you six days in a week and thank the one. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Jack, one guy, six thirty-five hundred avenue. I'm, I'm here right now as the school director. So, uh, yes, we did have to call school today, but we did have our Act eighty day, which was good, but because of the delay in school, it wasn't feasible to have our kids. Okay, so what I do wanna talk about, we have this exciting, uh, fair coming up. This is an apprentice and trade fair. It's coming up on February twenty-fifth, it's Tuesday. It's gonna be for our juniors and our seniors, it's during the day. Um, this is the first trade fair that we're having. We have the carpenters union, the Delaware County Community College skilled trades, E D S I youth pre-apprenticeship program, electrical union, uh, six fifty-four ironworkers, four oh five maritime careers, Oliver heating, Nolan painting. We also have the Air Force, Army, Marines postcard. Let me leave anybody out, Navy. Uh, we have several trade schools that are gonna be coming. We have over seventy-five kids that have signed up for this. So this is gonna be a great venue, because we're looking, the school district is looking to expand its apprenticeship program. Is why we went and do this, because not every person needs to go to a for your house. And we all talk about the importance of local apprenticeships, right? They can't, they can't oversee carpentry, they can't oversee electrician, things like that. So this is a great opportunity for our students and we're hoping that we're gonna be continuing this, uh, in the years ahead. We will also be, uh, hosting our first S A T testing in March. So this will be the first time that the school district has had that as well. Um, on February twenty-seventh, we will be having our national blue ribbon award. It will be at seven o'clock at the, in the auditorium at the high school. Um, we, I already talked about that, how prestigious this word is. So that's really all, I just wanted to give you guys an update on the history, if anybody has any questions.
Okay, make sure we get all the information that we're gonna edit for our calendar.
Okay, and, um, and we are off on Friday, um, for the parade. So go birds. Thank you very much.
Just for the record, I wanna announce that we had an executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss two litigation matters. Um, we're about to get into public comment.
There's any sound working, can we now? Why do you wanna get into a public comment? And again, anybody who wishes to comment on public comment and sign up on our board by six thirty-eight tonight and, um, then you have three minutes to speak, um, with your comments. And this is again, not a answer question period, it's for comments. We're asking, anybody here in the back, we will not be going back and forth and having residents, members of this audience call out. Thank you. Uh, our first one is Mario.
My name is Smith, forty-six South Worth now, no. The police department has stated that, uh, pedestrian accidents, pedestrian safety, traffic safety are top priority. I think we all agree with that, um, just as to mayor and council. The traffic light, the traffic light. I assume we're gonna get an update tonight. Frankly, if I was in your position right now, with this weather going on literally right now, this is the worst possible time for this to be happening. The lights been on blinker and stop signs, one of the busiest intersections in the county for two weeks now. I, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night with this going on. That's all I'll say about that and hopefully we're gonna get an update. Uh, two quick updates from the, uh, I serve on the county green space task force, um, one unfortunate one, given the county's, uh, budget issues this year, there unfortunately will be no, uh, green waste grant round this year, so if we wanna see that come back, um, municipalities need to keep the fires warm and let county council people and residents need to let county kids and people know that's priority. Uh, one thing that we talked about is making sure people understand that open space and parks and recreation is also, uh, you know, environmental issues that impact property flooding and things like, uh, property and life safety, so people need to understand these are not just bells and whistles. So, uh, that's the situation there. Um, there are two new programs called, uh, active transit, the active transit plan and vision zero, which means zero pedestrian injuries and fatalities in Delaware County as a goal. Uh, hopefully, yes, I went to the police department, there may be some funding opportunities and, um, multi-municipal planning opportunities with that. So just, um, just letting you know about that. Um, the last item I, I feel I need to say is, before uh, council presumes to lecture their constituents about public participation, I think council and particularly the council president and vice president need to take a long, hard look in the mirror about how you treat your constituents, your colleagues, borough code, and the rule of law. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Phil Haffner, five seventy-one South Old Melrose Town Road, Media PA. I'm a substantial tax payer here in the borough with multiple businesses. I'm here before the council regarding the motion with tonight's posted agenda. The motion is to waive the nine percent retroactive interest all passed due to sewer and trash fees. Many of the delinquent accounts go back to twenty eighteen. The amount owed from twenty eighteen to twenty, twenty twenty-three is five hundred thirty-seven dollars eleven cents. That's a half a million dollars. For twenty twenty-four, the money owed for sewer is a hundred and forty thousand one eighty-eight and trash is forty-seven thousand five ninety, for a total of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The grand total owed on these two, uh, things being the sewer and the trash is six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars eleven cents in arrears. These totals came from my right to no request in early January of this year. Just one year's interest for the total debt at nine percent would be sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. This is just one year. We're talking about interest over a seven-year period. My conservative assumption is it's going to be more than a hundred thousand dollars in interest. Our twenty twenty-five sewage bill is now sixteen dollars and fifty cents per thousand. Check and water bill that you recently received, you will see that. To contrast, Eddie's son, twenty twenty-four sewage rate is six dollars per thousand. This rate was published in the Spirit newspaper. That is ten dollars and fifty cents per thousand less. I urge you council not to waive the nine percent penalty. There must be consequences for people who do not pay their utility bills. If there is a vote, I urge you council members who may be delinquent on the sewer or trash fees to recuse themselves from voting, if there are any. I also request a roll call, call vote if there is a vote tonight. If the motion is passed waiving the nine percent fee, I will let every borough resident and business owner know who voted in favor and who voted against the motion. This information will be distributed by my own, at my own personal expense. I will advise all residents who come to the next borough meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, to voice their dissatisfaction. Thank you for your time.
Very much, sir. Thank you very much. Well, I can see the bottom, but the clear is coming on that board, that's why we had to see, but we're fine, cause I can see the bottom. Thank you very much. Okay, next we're going to our, um, committee reports. The Stirling River structure, down, Councilwoman Johnson. Yes, you know, that just went off.
Get a name down as well? Hello?
This man don't know.
Yeah, I'm.
He's at the bottom, he's at open discussion.
I don't think, he was asking where you were.
So you, you wanna come, did you wanna comment earlier or I just opened the discussion and?
Right now the comment period for items on the agenda, cause you've got a general topic, it's definitely, that's why I wanted.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, now we're going to, into our committee reports, we're gonna have to. Johnson?
Thank you. Um, so I, I really don't have anything on my agenda to report, but I will address the traffic light situation. It is being looked at and then recently this evening, it looks like a tractor trailer took the, uh, train gate out, so uh, we're now looking into that, that's what I've been emailing back and forth about and texting while I'm up there. Um, so the work was to be completed according to my understanding today for the traffic light, but.
Delayed a little because of the.
Yes, because of the weather. So that's the update on the traffic light. Uh, we have been staying on top of it with Dr. Cantina, Jack has been involved myself, so we are on top of it. Um, the other would be, um, to thank Spurgeon and William for being out down the street, salting, getting our roads cleared up for everybody to go travel. Um, that's all I, I have tonight. Thank you.
Working on that, we're trying to like and everything. I know they've been working on it in the weather. So are they still projecting to be done by Friday?
I haven't heard anything different, but I did reach out to Charles while we're in this meeting and then the others. And once I hear something, I'll like.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Something on a, um.
Please, I'm.
Thank you. All right, finance administration. Me and at this point in time, I have nothing before. We do have our committee meeting on Thursday at, um, seven o'clock, so we'll be doing things at that meeting at that time. Moving on. Public safety. So we did have our own.
So we did have our own first committee meeting of twenty twenty five last night. Um, everyone that was in attendance, could see the goals for twenty twenty five. That the minutes will be posted on the website as well, so everyone uh, knows what was discussed and they do have a copy of uh, the goals for this year. Um, I do recall has the update on the civil service.
Yeah, so this is just uh, meetings of your boards and commissions for the civil service commission, Carlton Baggies, terms expired and you have to um, determine whether you want to reappoint him or appoint someone else. Um, until you do so, he will hold over in that, in that position. But his position is, is already expired, so it's something that you should prioritize. Uh, and that's it.
Anything else?
No, I'm, no, that's it, that's fine.
Thank you. Next morning, public health sanitation and recycling, Councilwoman Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. Last night, we also had our first committee meeting for twenty twenty five, and we as well are working on goals and objectives. So as we move forward out of our meeting, one of our goals is to establish a cleanup day, which will be forthcoming in April. Right now, tentatively, it's scheduled for April twenty sixth, so that will be a cleanup day that will go through our community here and do some cleaning, but we will advertise that and provide posters and get information out to the residents. Also, we'll be working on some signage, so that we will encourage people how to properly do recycling. So these are some of our goals and objectives as we go through looking into, the new phase with the public health and sanitation and recycling. So currently, those are just the things that we established last night. So as we push forward, we'll once again advocate to the residents to come out and get involved. Also, want to acknowledge the residents for continuing to recycle. As I come up at least twice during the week, I see the containers continue to be full, so we do thank those that are participating in the recycle. And I would now at this point turn over, I am done, back to the council president.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for? Lauren Orness, Councilwoman, the show.
Good evening, um, we also had a meeting last night, our first meeting of the year, um, and we were able to discuss with the chief, uh, some parking's um, concerns around the borough, he and I had to drive around late last fall, uh, where we went up and down every street in the borough, and went over everything, so some of those are still being discussed a little bit. There's some place for signage needs to be put up, making sure people aren't parking on one side, when they're not supposed to park on that side, so on and so forth. And some, some, some other things that are still, it's too early to sort of discuss, there's some things that have to do with public safety and, and L and L. And then Mr. Lynn brought up tonight something about our parking ordinance, I will look at that and see what he's referring to, about uh, whatever details that he brought up in his opinion that would needed to be done, so we'll see what that's into. I'll, I'll look at that with the chief and um, see what Carl says too. And if no one has any questions, I will turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have our um, media economic development, um, council. It's not here, so.
Um, this is a continuation of the conversation on the civil service commission, uh, looking at your zoning hearing board and your planning commission, they both need to be reconstituted. Um, currently, you only have two people on your planning commission, uh, it's Mr. Lee and Mr. Willie Craft. Uh, they would uh, be up for reappointment, but you, you should have a third, so you should be looking for a third person um, to be on that commission. Uh, and um, the zoning hearing board uh, is the same situation, so I think it's currently full, but you need to, uh, consider whether those people need to be reappointed or replaced. Um, all those people are gonna hold over, you know, so you have, you know, they will, you know, if, if Mr. Lynn comes in with an application, it will go before the commission or the, or the zoning hearing board. Um, but uh, you should be looking now to, to uh, reconstitute those.
We'd be in touch with both of you to see if you still are interested in being on, the commissions.
And Mr. Lynn, Mr. Willie Craft, I'd say we'll be in touch with you.
Oh, right, yeah.
All right.
And what, one more thing, if you, if you'll allow me, uh, that Mrs. Lockley, I've asked Doug to say tonight, the Tofichi Airmen, the Philly Red Tails are having a commemorative luncheon here on uh, March the twenty ninth, it's, I believe it's fifty dollars. It is a three hour program, you will get a free lunch, there'll be all sorts of swag, and it's, it's a program for a Scott, for scholarships, that this organization gives. Um, if you didn't attend the program from Mr. Rice last year, it's really interesting, it's, it's history, it's, it's important, it's, it's Americana, um, sweatshirts, baseball caps, all sorts of things available, I'm sure for sale. Um, so, this is, this will be back up on the um, Walton Board out here, and I believe that Doug's going to put it on the website too, so if on the twenty, Saturday, the twenty ninth, you have, nothing to do, this would be a great thing to do to support um, these heroes and, and also something nice for the borough that they want to have it here. There will actually, also be a flyover uh, at some point in the afternoon, so it should be a, a big event for us. All right, so all the information's here, you did have to order online, although uh, Lisa's gonna find out if you can get tickets at the door. Thank you.
Michelle, I'm not aware of that, or the rental here.
Well, Lisa told me it was all set up and these people have, have it advertised and all sorts of things.
I didn't approve anything.
Well.
That down, so she can follow up on that.
Yeah. That, that's, actually, that, that's supposed to go back up on the board, I mean, saying. Yes.
You have to follow up to make sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we have our parks and recreation, Mr. Stubbs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the MVPs. As you see down here, Morton's valuable people. This is Park and Recreation's new uh, board, I wanna thank my brother Jack and express our love to him and his family, who in the situation he's going through. I will be coming to him as much as I can during the week to help develop the uh, grant money. We know we have square footage to as far as uh, the apparatuses we wanna place on the, on Jacobs Park. But we're gonna go hand in hand and match that with the dollar value and see how it turns out. So hopefully, by next meeting, we'll be able to speak largely on what the park and recreation, at Jacobs Park will look like and Sec, uh, Sycamore Avenue will look like. And uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marriage report? I have, I apologize because I'm only part of the fires. Um, I have two events to just give a heads up and we'll make sure that you have them um, from the firehouse, and from uh, a joint effort with the police department. The first would be March twenty third, sorry if I'm stealing your time there. Um, March twenty third, it's their uh, pasta with a purpose, where um, they have pasta meals for sale, whether you come in, any or dish, they, she's way better at this than I am. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there and so that everyone knows, it will be between four and seven. The cost in advance is fifteen, twenty dollars at the door. Um, and I have, we, we, how many times have we done this now? I think it's three or four, and it sells out pretty quickly, um, and it's really good, so. Uh, the other event, just to have a heads up ahead of time, is April fifth, will be the breakfast with the Easter bunny from nine to eleven AM. April fifth, it'll be ten dollars a person for the buffet. The Easter egg hunt is right after at eleven, and that's great. So, um, and that's with the fire company and the police department, so. That's all I have. And I'll make sure that you have the information to put up on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor, what you. Moving right along, we'll have our action items, and we're gonna go back and talk about the motion we're gonna be calling for. Well, we'll just, that's the motion. So we'll go with the motion to waive the nine percent retroactive interest. And send all pads through sewer and trash fees, which the owner does not have any current payment plan with the borough. It's important also with collections, and we're waving that retroactive discharges. We wanted, as for a motion for that. Can I get a motion, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
We're not gonna have any discussion publicly?
Well, we, we will. Can I get a second?
Not if we're gonna vote first.
You have a question? That's where the discussion goes in.
You have a question? Yes, I do have a question. Mm-hmm, my question is, um, could it be explained why waiving this interest is beneficial to, uh, the borough residents who pay their um, trash and sewer fees on time? What is the reasoning behind that? So the public can understand what it is that uh, the, the details here, because it, I don't agree with it. So my question is, what's the benefit to the borough doing this?
Jack, would you like to, um, give the reason why we're asking to waive the nine percent?
Sure.
About?
Again, my indication, again, I wasn't here for the Portnoy meeting, uh, it's basically to um, be a little more fair um, for people that can't pay, I, I understand uh, the other analysis that it's unfair, but, mayor and council have decided to move forward, um, put all this stuff in the past, and move forward and, and get ahead. It was a good meeting with Portnoy, they're gonna be very aggressive in the next couple of weeks to get as much uh, funds to the borough. And that was what was decided.
Well, it, it doesn't seem fair to the eighty five to ninety percent of the people that do pay um, on time or during the discount periods.
Well, what was discussed, and we also stating, you are aware of Councilwoman Miller, that was stated that, couldn't it, fees on the back from what wasn't collected, before, previous, no letters were sent out or anything, and we're looking at being fair with everything moving forward, putting at nine percent, bringing it forward on twenty four ongoing, once Portnoy get the letters and everything.
It's been an ordinance on record for.
We understand that, that's why the vote's coming up. So, we stated that and everything, so we have our vote, uh, we have our, our motion, and we have our second. Can we get a, a roll call from our manager?
Council President Bernice Clark Dickinson?
Yes.
Council President Bethan Johnson?
Yes.
Council Michelle Miller?
No.
Council Vice President Chantay Miller?
I'll be seen.
Counselor Michelle Roberts?
No.
Counselor Walter Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Barry? Yes, thank you. Next we have, residents regarding public guidelines for participation in public meetings.
Yeah, um, this was, again, in discussing it with the council president, uh, Bernice and Carl, they decided to just, put into writing some things that a lot of the units always do in my career in New Jersey and, and talking to people in Pennsylvania, just to try to get a little more decorum. You know, I know people are gonna have disagreements, but sometimes things get out of hand and this kinda puts it in black and white, what is allowed, what is not. Um, it's pretty much common sense, and I'd be happy to give any, anyone a copy who wants to see it. But it's just to try to give things back um, on an even, you know, positive plane grid.
And this is what the um, borough has been doing really all along, is just when they chose to follow it. Um, they chosen and it would, would current map, but this is straight out of the sunshine, so we're following all the procedures. And again, we wanna follow through with the decorum and the participation and everything. Thank you.
Do you have someone to make a motion?
No, not yet. So, can I get a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
I second the motion.
Here we go.
Council President Bernice Clark Dickinson?
Yes.
Council Bethan Johnson?
Yes.
Council Michelle Miller?
Yes.
Council Vice President Chantay Miller?
Yeah.
Council Michelle Roberts?
Yes.
Council Walter Stubbs?
Yeah.
Mayor Amanda Hammer?
All right, the motion is. Yes, yes. Okay, we have a motion to approve January eighth, two thousand twenty five, January twenty second, two thousand twenty five, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, September, two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty two, October the twelfth, two thousand twenty two, and October the twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two minutes. Can I get a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Those. Next we have, just standing to the agenda, looking up for the upcoming dates. Um, that's coming up, we're talking about President's Day, then we have our um, O'Meara and Bernie's um, tax rebate seminar, that's gonna be held here at the Borough for ten to one. Then we have our free blood pressure screening. And that's gonna be at Yate Wellness Center, that's from ten to twelve, two, and then February twenty sixth is our Red Brother Council meeting. All right, we are back to open discussion now. Thank you.
Marissa Smith, forty six South Moren Avenue. I didn't have a chance to double check in the, I believe typically we read up resolutions before we vote on them. You're not answering, so I'll just leave that there. And then the only other thing I have for open discussion, um, Mrs. Lockley would like me to uh, let council know that she, put in the uh, uh, application for the use of the, the uh, facility for the Tuskegee Airmen's Veterans Event, and uh, it was handed to, I believe her name is Zan Burey, the new assistant, new wish assistant, and uh, she has a paper receipt for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, so best man follows up. All right, next is Ms. Todd?
Cecilia Todd, one ten, how feeling? Um, thank you for acknowledging the great job that the highway department did with the snow recently. Um, I was gonna say something, but you already took care of it, but the people on my street greatly appreciate, well, exactly what, how everything was taken care of, so thank you so much. Um, is there trash collection on Monday?
I don't believe there is. I have a following to do, um, Ms. Todd, because as he's uh, I'm sorry, I believe there is, because President's Day is what he considers a minor holiday, I believe it's going to be. I will double check and I'll get back to it.
Um, could you post something on the website? Because people tell me all the time that we ask them now and I'm calling somebody.
This is all, okay? Let me. Yes, please, please.
Okay.
All right, that'll be the gene, Councilwoman Roberts and Mr. Listen, they'll follow through, thank you.
Thank you.
The mayor never steals my thunder, but I will piggyback on, I did put pamphlets up uh, about the pasta dinner that the firehouse is hosting on March thirty third, so, um, it's on the website, it's on the firehouse website, I asked Doug, I sent it to Doug and Marty and Jack today, so they can put it on the borough website. When the flyer comes out for breakfast with the Easter bunny, I'll do that, well, I'll do that as well, so, please support your fire department, it's a one hundred percent volunteer fire department. Um, I know that we get. I know that we get some funding from the borough, but we have to support ourselves. I also learned that the annual fund that goes out to the Morton and Rutledge residents, the show from the Morton residents was disgraceful. Out of the residents, out of the number of residents, the turnout and the money that was collected, we appreciate, but the percentage of homes that responded was very, very, very disappointing. It was almost disgraceful that the Morton residents didn't come out and support the fire department with the annual fund. This is a one hundred percent volunteer fire department, and you never know when you're going to need them, and we're not going to not come, so the residents should wait to get their annual fund envelope, and please send a check, even if it's two dollars. Okay, let's see. This week, I received, as everybody did, the county tax bill, the borough tax bill, the trash bill, and the first quarter sewer bill. And I'm still working at sixty-nine years old, as are a lot of people. And I know it's difficult for me to get these bills paid on time, but I try to do it as as much as I can, and I do take advantage of deferred payments when I can, and I do pay the interest and the penalties, so. I don't think it's fair that the nine percent was, I know that people are having trouble.
Tony Brown, three oh two, Noel Street. I just wanted to ask whether there is a ordinance or something that says that after a snowstorm, we have twenty-four hour breaks or not to shovel and swap the sidewalks. I mentioned before, I walk my dog every morning and.
There is an ordinance.
Is it posted on the website?
Yeah, well, there's a link on the website to all of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, you have, yeah.
I'm finding this time around this year, or well, twenty twenty-four, and this year, there were several businesses and residents that were not shovel awards. Like in this area? Yeah, I walk forty-five, about fifty minutes, starting from my house and all the all around.
Twenty-four hour requirement, from the end of the snow.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hefner?
I do have a question, Chantae, did you abstain? Never, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm just going to say I'm disappointed, because it just seems that sending a message to Scott Claus saying, gee, you don't have to pay, there's no penalty, yes, you're going to be with Portnoy, but I'm just truly disappointed, it just says to people, you don't have to pay.
Are you speaking about me in particular?
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you.
But that's all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Ronald?
Shipman, forty forty Yale Avenue. I want to come here and say thank you to the committee. I know that there has been a lot of adjustments and changes with everything that's going on, but I do want to say thank you for the recommitment towards our youth. I have total of six kids, but two that are with me and Morton, and my kids love walking around Morton and different things like that, but that brings me to a safety concern. I was a prior resident on Main Street where in that apartment complex, there is Airbnb houses, and we have a lot of families that live there, but then there's a lot of people that come with the Airbnb. This touched my heart mainly because it was connected to my son being approached and someone tried to kidnap him a couple of months, last month, coming home from school, coming from the bus stop, going over to Main Street, and could not catch him, put in the police report, notified the school district, but this is a normal occurrence that happens all across the country. So my concern is really with the Airbnb, there is no background check, there is just people just come in and out. Is there any kind of ordinance or anything related to the Airbnb, because I'm worried about the safety of our our children that are in Morton?
It's it's never, as far as I know, we have no Airbnb ordinance, it really has never come up, as long as I've been on the council. Mrs. Roberts has been here a long time too, it hasn't come up, it's we can look into it, but right now, there is nothing.
Okay, I would love for the committee to look into that, just for the safety of our children and the amount of people that would come in day in and day out, because there's no at least two different apartment that does Airbnb, I don't know about anywhere else, but I know for there, and safety was my concern, so I just wanted to bring that issue to the committee, and also thank the committee for the work that they do on a daily basis, thank you.
I would ask that you make sure you give that information to our manager, who's listed the address and everything.
Sure.
You might not even be aware.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Ralph and us, that is our meeting, thank you, everybody, for talking out, keep safe out there.
That's, that's.
I can't read that. That everybody had a good night, be careful. I did again, but then this one said.
Mr. Coleman, Mr. Coleman? Oh, Chipman, I'm sorry, sorry.
Working with them, but what, because when they approached them, they approached them and asked them, hey, I order you, so, either way. No, no, it's it's not, at this point, it's it's more about awareness, because they were asking, they don't understand. So I know exactly where you're at.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, take care, honey, go birds.
Well, bird.